All right, we're ready to begin.
Great, well, it's Thursday, July 27th, and I'm going to call this LACC Council Work Session to Order. We have a published agenda and a motion to approve.
Move to approve the agenda as published?
Second.
It's moved in second. Is there any discussion? All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
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 Anyone in the post? Motion carries. We have an approved agenda. And for the record, all council members are present. First up on this agenda, approved agenda is potential contract dispute resolution center.
Before we get started, I just wanted to introduce our new housing coordinator, Jennifer Adams. So as the council may be aware, within the 2023 budget, you authorized a new position in the Community and Economic Development Department for Housing Coordinator. And Jennifer has filled that position, been in the role now for, I think, about three months.
Just about three.
Jennifer comes to us, she was a planner, working on some conservation stewardship stuff at Allen's County, and also has a background in real estate. So she's been working on a couple of big projects for us, representing the staff with the Regional Housing Council, doing a great job there, and then also has begun work on something on the Planning Commission Work Program this year related to a study on mobile manufactured home park preservation. So she's got some big projects right out of the gate, and then also now including potential contact, contract with the dispute resolution center, which is their purpose for us being in front of you tonight. So with that, I will turn it over to Jennifer.
Yeah, thank you, Ryan, and please, if I'm not loud enough, just ask me or let me know, and I will project a little bit more. And I just wanted to say thank you for the introduction, Ryan, and so far I have just thoroughly enjoyed being part of the Lacy team, so very happy to be here. Thank you so much for letting me be part of this this evening. So we're going to try to avoid death by PowerPoint, but we'll see how quickly I can get through this for you this evening. So the topic for consideration this evening is the dispute resolution services, how they work to serve landlords and tenants in our community, and then an opportunity to establish a service agreement with the dispute resolution center of Thurston County. Where's my? Oh, just click. Fantastic. Okay. So what exactly is dispute resolution? It's kind of just like it sounds. It's a process by which conflict may be resolved with the support and the guidance of trained professionals who approach all conflicts with compassion and the goal to work together to find acceptable solutions for all parties. And it's been found that a dispute resolution or that dispute resolution provides a path that is less financially and emotionally burdensome for all parties involved. Additionally, DRC services help keep landlord and tenant issues out of the court system. So when we look to policy for guidance, we can first look at what Washington State has to say in RCW 59.18315. This section is on mediation of disputes by independent third parties, and the state is very much in favor of this being an option before cases between landlords and tenants go to court. And then if we look a little closer to our own Lacy Housing Action Plan, we can identify three objectives. The first, identify and implement appropriate tenant protections that improve household stability, adopt an eviction mitigation ordinance to find ways to mutually end a rental agreement rather than evicting tenants, should it come to that, and then finally, increase access to legal assistance for landlord and tenant issues. So in 2000, pardon me here, just for one minute. In November of 2021, Washington State introduced a pilot program for dispute resolution services, and it was funded for nearly two years statewide. Under this pilot program, it was mandated that landlords must give tenants the option to participate in the resolution process prior to filing an eviction lawsuit. Though it wasn't mandatory that a tenant choose this option, if a tenant did choose this option, then a landlord must also agree to the option. And then the question is, was the pilot program successful? And so when we look at the state data during this, again, less than two-year time period, it's been reported that 100 and just over 170,000 landlord and tenant cases were served directly. Of those, 78,102 cases were closed and completed. Of those, 73, excuse me, 73% of closed cases reached agreements, and of those cases, 94% preserved tenancy. And then when we look at the portion for Lacy specifically, in that timeframe there again, which was July 22 to March 23, there were 392 housing-related cases that were directly served. Some of those were conciliation cases that don't always involve everybody at the table with a mediator, and then the majority of those were reported to go to mediation. So now, by state statute, as of July 1 of this year, the program has reached sunset, and so landlords are no longer required to provide tenants with this option. However, you can see this very simple bar graph here does indicate that services, the demand for services is really still on the rise. Significant increase in services utilized from 2020, where you see it was about 60,000 cases, to 2022, which almost nearly tripled in services used. So since the pilot program has ended, we do have an opportunity as a city, as well as all jurisdictions have the opportunity to enter into a voluntary contract with DRC Services, if this is something that the city would like to continue providing for our local residents and landlords. So after, after staff review and some research, staff is requesting consideration of $50,000 to fund potential, maybe we look at it as a trial run, which would commence from the time of approval, I suppose, in ratified contract through the end of this year, December 31 of 2023. Then I guess I should point out as well here that $50,000, there's a lot of ways to make assumptions with how many persons could be served with that amount. There's a rough expectation that 32 conciliation cases could be served as well as 32 mediation cases. Again, that's just one scenario. And then we might want to consider what does this cost breakdown look like if we were to pursue something like this? This would be a monthly billed service to the city with a fixed cost of $1,250 each month. Within the service contract year, the DRC also does two staff trainings. Those are billed at $1,000 per training. And then conciliation cases, again, those often don't, those often can be solved or worked out with just one session and may not have to go to mediation. So those are billed per person, per session at $175. And then mediation cases that begin with a dedicated two-hour roundtable with all parties involved. Those are billed a little higher.
Question, this is just where you leave this slide. The $1,000 for is to train who?
Staff, right?
Yes, it's staff training. I can certainly get back to you with more specifics on who would be eligible for that training. Certainly.
If you have a fixed monthly cost, I could anticipate that a problem like this might have more demand as it goes on, as more people hear about it. Will, if we have unused money, will it roll over? And how do we accommodate the bigger demand toward the end of the?
That's it. That's also a great question. My understanding to this point is that, A, yes, if money were left over at the end of the year, those funds could be rolled over if we pursued another contract in 2024.
But on a month-to-month basis, let's say the first months, we didn't use all of the contracted monthly amount. Would that be rolled over so that if we exceeded that amount, the next month it could be applied to that? See what I mean?
I do. Ryan, do you want to?
Yeah, so the, if you want to go back to that slide. So what we're talking about is a maximum of $50,000 that would be through the end of this year. There's a certain amount per each case that's utilized. And so if that ran out, if we use $50,000 in the first month, essentially, we're done. At that point, we'd have to either be done or come back to the council to authorize another contract. So we're not worried about running over month-to-month. It's just when the $50,000 is fully utilized, that's when the contract would end, short of December 31 of 2023.
Thank you for clarifying that.
That's, I mean, at this point, I, we estimate that $50,000 will be enough to get us through the end of this year. But again, we're not sure about extending that anytime past into 2024. So at this point, that's, it would be an interim basis to fulfill the rest of the year.
Part of the pilot is to gauge the need, to gauge demand for these services.
So I'm sure, you know, come November or October, or we're rolling through this, we can get update and say, hey, we're probably not going to make it through the year.
This is the end of your presentation?
Just about.
Okay.
Thanks so much.
My comments for later.
Thanks so much for bearing with me. Much appreciated. So if this is something that, that council, you know, decides to pursue, expected, expected next steps for staff will be to start working with, of course, our city attorney on the appropriate contract service agreement, and then present back to you guys at an established date in the very near future. And then lastly, it's always nice to look to what our city, our neighboring cities are doing within our region. And so I just wanted to point out that Tumwater just got a slight head start back in March and decided to enter a contract with the DRC of Thurston County. And I've had some discussions with the management in Tumwater, who's been reporting that so far since March, services are being heavily utilized. So just wanted to bring that to your attention. And that is all that I officially had for you on slides.
Okay, so on the surface, this seems like an amicable program, and it seems like it would serve a public need. And, you know, that's the way it looked to me, and I looked for feedback from landlords and property managers, and I get a completely different picture. And I don't speak with any knowledge or experience on being a landlord or being a property manager, but it's been a source of contention for a lot of property managers in the local area. So when I'm asked a few of them to email the council and express their experiences working with this remediation program, and just get a better picture of what are the pros and cons of this program.
In the research to do this, did we meet with anybody, anybody in that business at all?
I'm sorry, could you repeat?
Sure. In the research and preparing this, did we meet with anybody from that, kind of that business?
Yeah, any property managers, did we get any feedback?
No property management managers.
For someone who's been a renter before and has, you know, rental properties, it seems like, of course, what you want is to, if there's a conflict and the rent's not being paid for one or the other, you want to get to a solution. Either they can be able to continue or not, and so I don't.
That's, that's the intention here, but, but there's a bottleneck that exists when you put that element into it. And, you know, like I said, I'm not a property manager. I can't speak with experience, but I know it has been a source of frustration for property owners and their property managers to try to come up with a reasonable conclusion when there's a bottleneck of different cases that they have to follow behind. So that's one part of many other issues.
Well, that's one, one thing why this has been kind of somewhat proposed as a pilot program at the end of the year, and I think maybe one distinction between the previous most recent experience during the pandemic and COVID was that you had to state fund the program, but also made it mandatory. If the renter asked for it, then it was a mandatory process.
Right. And there's many cases where a property manager and a tenant can come to a conclusion without going through all those steps. Just, you know, it could just amount to a simple phone call.
Correct.
You know, I.
So in this circumstance.
In this circumstance, this wouldn't be a.
Both people have to agree.
Yeah, and, and this would be a process that if they want to, we would be able to provide some support to reduce that barrier for them to access the service.
Yeah, that's different.
So this is not, this is similar with Tumwater, and this would be voluntary on both sides. So both, both the landlord and the tenant have to agree to it.
That's correct. That's correct.
See, that's a, that's a totally different change. I could see if you, if there's a mandatory and they create a huge bottleneck and you can't get to the case month five, right?
Now, you know. Now you have a tenant that's not paying rent at all for however long it takes and.
That could, yeah, be a problem. In this circumstance, both sides want to come up to a solution. They agreed to go to this program, then they're both.
And they both have to agree. So if the tenant wants it, the landlord says no, then there's no, there's no opportunity to utilize that service.
Generally, in past training I've had with mediation through the dispute resolution center was that you can't get to a mediation process without both parties agreeing to go into that process together, because otherwise it's not, not as easy as an outcome.
Force mediation doesn't often succeed.
Well, I think it'd be helpful to hear the other perspective and.
And one of the things too, is being a pilot program and looking at towards the, the end of the year, we will have the opportunity to evaluate, get some numbers of what the true need is, and kind of get that feedback, because we'll now have a way to access some metrics through, through this contract. And then, and then, of course, as we monitor that going into our budgetary process before the end of the year, adapt the final budget, we can also probably have some information that can go into forming that budget for 2024.
Well, and obviously, this is for information right now. There's, this will come back for the council. My, my recommendation is to take the next steps in this, and then maybe we can get some information in the meantime before it becomes, come back to council from some property management, and make sure that we understand what's going on there too. But, you know, we still have a step away from here, and so I think we have a little bit of time. And the fact that this is both voluntary, both sides.
Several in this, you know, here, right here in Lacy that reach out to landlord again to, just because they manage, you know, hundreds, hundreds of thousands of units, so they, they have a lot more experience dealing with it, obviously. So it'd be good to, but on a voluntary basis, I can't imagine why they would have any objection.
One other thing that wasn't mentioned, but is also a benefit, is how it keeps things out of the court system. So that, you know, that's a, that's a burden on the court system to have to go through that process. It's a burden on, you know, everybody associated with that, the sheriff's office that has to get involved in a, in an eviction, all those things. You know, create an additional bottleneck that tend to go away when you're looking at a process.
This all makes sense. I would like to hear that other perspective, though.
I think that process is probably longer too, wouldn't it be? I mean.
Quick process, oh, yeah.
I mean, that's not a quick process. Got the courts involved.
Do you need something from it?
Council's agreeable and moving forward, I think, has a, but the council's agreeable and moving forward, and schedule for a future council agenda item with a draft PSA to be.
If we're going to reach out to property management firms, is there an opportunity for us to reach out to organizations that represent tenants? They might have a perspective on this as well. They may have talked to people who've gone through this during the required period or folks down in Tumwater who've used this, and that would be good to know.
Yeah, I think it'd be good to hear from both sides. Absolutely.
It sounds like to me it would be good for both the management and the owners and the tenants. I agree. Okay, I think there's some agreement move forward and get some more information.
Does the DRC survey the, the tenants or landlords after the completion of?
That's a really good question. I believe, I will get back to you with a firm answer. What I do know to be true is that city wouldn't necessarily be privy to intimate details of cases, but that we would be, you know, kept abreast of how many cases were being, were being seen.
I guess, what you're getting at is how well, how well received has this been after people have gone through the process? Especially in Tumwater, since we're sort of modeling this after Tumwater, they have been, you know, how long does it take to get through the process and what some success rate, I mean, how they feel, you know, so on and so forth.
So we may be able to work and build into the scope of work, the reporting metrics for a monthly basis, so we can track what's going on and have some qualifier.
As long as we're asking. I saw your numbers and your percentages, and, and, and they look, they look good, but I didn't see the 392 for Lacy broken down in any way. Can we, can you help with that a little bit?
I sure can, and I'm making a list. I will get back to you on that. This data did come directly from my contact at the, at the DRC, the executive director, Jody. And so I, you know, I'll, I'll work with her on, on seeing if we can get a more of a breakdown. Would you like to see?
I do think we're sort of talking apples and oranges on this from this program compared to what enforcement or I could see why that doesn't work as well.
Also, Robin said forced mediation sold the market.
Yeah, that's just real.
And that's what that was, right? Forced mediation.
Yeah.
You will come to agreement.
But, you know, there's just some, there's some information there. I think that helps, helps a little bit.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Next up on our agenda, the land acknowledgement policy. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good work.
Well, good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and council members. I am here tonight to talk about a draft land acknowledgement policy, and I've got a short presentation to go through on this policy. So in your agenda packets, you will find a staff report, and a lot of the information that will be overviewed is provided in that staff report. Just to start off from the top, the recommendation is tonight just to review the draft land acknowledgement policy, and then to adopt the draft land acknowledgement policy at a future regular city council meeting through a resolution. And this would add it to the city council policies and procedure, which needs the action of the resolution to make an amendment to that. This policy has been reviewed by the Community Relations and Public Affairs Committee on July 3, as well as the Commission on Equity back in June, November of last year, and then November of 2021 was when the conversation started, and there's been several iterations and reviews throughout the commission's time. And the advantages is really for creating a consistent way for the city to recognize, respect, support, and build relationships with indigenous communities while also bringing awareness of histories that have led to past and current development of areas. So the fiscal impact is de minimis. There is none really anticipated. This is something that was included as part of the work plan under an engaged community. It's also something that would fold under the communications plan, which is goal to C, which is create relationships and continue to build capacity with historically represented communities to ensure barriers to participation are eliminated, allowing individuals to participate in decisions that impact the community as desired. This was something that was in the adopted Commission on Equity work plan for 2023, and the Commission on Equity's recommendation is to adopt the draft land acknowledgement policy. So just to provide some context and background, as you walk in City Hall, you will see the Lacy Accord, and that was signed back in March 4 of 2014. This is an agreement between the Lacy City Council and then Esqali Tribal Council. And this really acknowledges the partnership and mutual interests that are shared between the city and the Esqali Indian Tribe. It provides a framework for future meetings and collaboration, and it's still here in City Hall, like I mentioned, and there was a rededication ceremony to the totem pole as well as the mutual accord on July 9 of 2015. So just to kind of show the accord here in a little bit more detail, and it is also included as part of the staff report as attachment one in your packets, you can see that what the agreement was, was that the parties, so the city of Lacy as well as the Esqali Indian Tribe, would meet on an annual basis or more frequently if desired. At these meetings, the parties would identify common goals and mutual interests benefiting both tribal members and residents of Lacy, and that both parties would identify actions that are necessary to address or resolve issues of mutual importance, and that the parties would explore opportunities or engage in activities which would strengthen the ties between the Esqali Indian Tribe and the city of Lacy. So moving on to some background on land acknowledgements, so they are rooted in many indigenous peoples' practices and cultural protocols. I've provided a snippet here from the Duamish tribe's webpage, and it reads, "It is important to note that this kind of acknowledgement is not a new practice developed by colonial institutions. Land acknowledgements is a traditional custom dating back centuries for many native communities and nations. For non-indigenous communities, land acknowledgement is a powerful way of showing respect and honoring the indigenous people of the land on which we work and live. Acknowledgement is a simple way of resisting the erasure of indigenous histories and working towards honoring and inviting the truth." So like mentioned in that statement, land acknowledgements, the purpose is to recognize and respect indigenous communities, provide support for indigenous communities, continue to build strong and authentic relationships with indigenous communities, bring awareness of histories that have led to past and current development of an area, including histories of dispossession, displacement, colonialization, cultural erasure, broken treaties, recognize indigenous history, culture, and positive impacts in the greater community, and use as a step forward to really inspire more action and better relationships with indigenous communities. And importantly, they are not meant to be performative acts. So background on the draft policy and the draft land acknowledgement that is before the council for review today, this really started several years ago with collaborations between the Esqali Indian Tribe and the Lacy Museum. Annette, Netsey Bullchild was working really closely with Erin Quinn Balcho on creating a land acknowledgement, and this built into the foundation of what you all are looking at today. So the Esqali Indian Tribe did provide some information, and we took that information and brought it to the Commission on Equity and did a kind of initial review, got some initial feedback. And then we, the Commission on Equity recommended a few edits and additions to what was provided, and so the city worked to send that back out to the Esqali Indian Tribe as well as the Squawks and Indian Tribe for feedback. The Esqali Indian Tribe provided feedback, and we have incorporated that feedback that we have received into the draft that is before you today. And importantly, the feedback we received was adding language that this policy is subject to change, and like any policy in the city council policy and procedure manual, it is subject to change, and it would change through resolution as I described earlier in the presentation. Also adding language on the Medicine Creek Treaty of 1854. So you will see several references throughout the full land acknowledgement as well as the abbreviated land acknowledgement that draw attention towards the Medicine Creek Treaty. After this, the Commission on Equity reviewed and provided the recommendation that I stated earlier, and then we took this draft to the Community Relations Committee for review and recommendation. So I know I briefly went over this, but do provide just a little bit more detail of not just the purpose of what land acknowledgements are, but what's also found in the policy, it provides a little bit more information. So the elements found in the draft policy include the purpose of the policy and land acknowledgements, so similar information to what I just provided in an overview in this presentation, as well as the full city of Lacy land acknowledgement. So you will see that this one is several paragraphs long, and the idea would be that this is something that could be used when space is not limited or time is not limited. However, recognizing that there are many cases where space is limited and time is limited, it also provides an abbreviated city of Lacy land acknowledgement within the draft policy. It provides direction on use of the land acknowledgement, and I do want to make the distinction that as you're reading through the policy, it is permissive. It is not imperative. And uses could include at city meetings, events, or programming, city plans, report outs, and other adopted documents, and city signage, markers, maps, and other materials. And then finally, the last element of it would be to include information on our website about the land acknowledgement. So I, you'll find in the packet the full land acknowledgement, but just as an example, you can see that this one is, again, several paragraphs long. And then an abbreviated, which is significantly shorter, again, allowing for when space and time is very limited. So let's dive into the policy itself in a little bit more detail, and I do want to pull this up. Just kind of walk through, talk through what this looks like. So like I mentioned, in attachment two, you've got the draft land policy. And you can see it provides the background history of what landing acknowledgements are, what the purpose is. And then you can see the full land acknowledgement is included, the abbreviated land acknowledgement, land acknowledgement uses, and then providing a little bit more information on how it should be used in those particular uses if they are to be used. Recommendations specifically for each type of of use, so for example, you said city meetings and events, use in city plans, reports and other adopted documents, and use in signage, markers, maps and other materials. And then, like I mentioned, the last section being on information provided on the city's website. So with that counsel, that is a general overview of the draft land acknowledgement policy. Again, the recommendation is to review it today and to move forward with the adoption of the draft land acknowledgement policy at a future regular city council meeting. I would be happy to answer any questions on this topic.
No need any action today, no.
Just gonna ask Rick, when's her raise, dude? When is her raise, dude?
And so done some outlines of when we would do the land acknowledgement. I think obviously before council meeting, really civil council meeting makes like to do this land acknowledgement. But, you know, I think we need to set some expectation of are we gonna do it for the council meetings? Are we doing it for work sessions? Are we doing to it for committee assignment meeting, right? I feel I would like to do it at a regular, every council.
Somewhere in me.
In the council meeting.
The regular.
Regular council meetings. Is that? Yeah, well, at the council meeting for sure, where we're, you know. Yeah.
And and what would that look like?
I'd start off, I would start off the meeting by doing. Yeah, I guess it would be.
So Mr. Mayor, if I if I could just a little bit here, under the draft policy, which the first one is city meetings, events or programming, it it does say that should be printed on every regular and special council meeting agenda and read aloud at council meetings where appropriate, as determined by the mayor or presiding officer. And certainly, so that I just wanted to highlight that as as drafted, it does give you flexibility and permission to kind of refine what that looks like.
And would this happened before I even start the meeting and then?
Yeah, that's a great question. And so there is some recommendations on when and how you should provide the land acknowledgement. And it should certainly be provided distinct of any other item. And typically, they are provided at the very beginning of meetings after, say, a roll call, pledge of allegiance, type, those types of routine items having.
So like they normally do pledge, or you do the pledge of allegiance, and then you would do the land acknowledgement, and then we would approve the agenda after, right? If you approve the agenda after that away.
We do after, after that, so, okay.
And so just to.
Before we approve the agenda.
So the way that their draft policy says, the recommendations for use at city meetings or events, it would be that the fuller abbreviated land acknowledgement should be read at the beginning of meetings or events. So again, there's still some flexibility there, but towards the beginning.
Any other questions? So next up on our agenda is the Advisory Board's stipend program. Back to you.
Good evening again, I didn't have to go far, far the second item, and neither did you. So we are here to talk about the Advisory Board's stipend program, and once again, I do have a presentation. And just similarly to that last format, I want to start with kind of the general overview. The recommendation is to review the draft advisory board stipend program here tonight. And then I provided four options for this body to consider for moving forward with this item. I do want to recognize that the Community Relations Committee forwarded this item to the full city council for discussion without making a recommendation. The options for the Lacey City Council to consider tonight, option one would be to create an advisory board stipend program based on attachment one, which is found in the staff report. And at a regular, future regular council meeting, city staff would return with an ordinance that would amend the Lacey Municipal Code, as well as a resolution to add this program to the city of Lacey's policy and procedure manual. Option two would be to take no action and do not create an advisory board stipend program. Option three would be to provide direction to city staff on other elements to consider in regards to a draft advisory board stipend program. And then staff would do further diligence on these elements and return to the Lacey City Council for additional review of these materials for consideration. And then option four would be something that is not contemplated in the above options. So this policy has gone before and has been reviewed several times by the Commission on Equity, as well as information was brought before the Planning Commission, the Parks Culture and Recreation Board, the Historical Board, the Lacey Youth Council. And then a recommendation was made by the Commission on Equity to move forward and recommend the adoption of an advisory board stipend program.
Chandler, for me, was that recommendation voted on unanimous?
With the Commission on Equity? Correct. So fiscal impact of implementing a program like this based on some of the parameters that we will go over, we estimate that it'll likely be around twenty thousand to forty-five thousand, and this would be about forty participants to ninety participants to implement this program, but this would depend on how many individuals opt into participating into the program.
Is ninety the total number of people that we have in involuntary positions?
Not, not currently. On advisory boards, we did kind of provide a buffer. And the reason for that is at times the city council may want to move forward with a task force that is looking at very specific items. And so we did want to make sure that we had budgeted that. So this fits under the work plan of an engaged community, as well as the communications plan, goal to C. And it was also in the Commission on Equity's twenty twenty-three work plan. And the Commission on Equity, like I mentioned, recommended implementing an advisory board stipend program. So for background on advisory board stipend programs, let's just start with advisory boards. So advisory boards, also known as commissions, task force, provide a critical point of community input. They are, most cases confirmed by the Lacey City Council, although there are a few exceptions to that. They make and they review a lot of materials and make recommendations to the city, as well as the city council on land use and zoning, parks, culture and recreation, library services, historical matters, diversity, equity, inclusion, lodging tax funding, youth perspectives, and like I mentioned, special issues as they come up. A good example recently was the homeless task force, as well as the parks outreach task force. They are volunteers, they do not currently receive a stipend to offset expenses that may be incurred by participating on city advisory boards. And when we're talking about expenses, these could include, but this is certainly not a full list, there could be other things outside of this. Childcare, transportation and internet access. And these types of expenses could serve as barriers to participation from community members. So looking at our city's advisory boards, we currently have nine permanent advisory boards, as well as representation on two regional boards. And we at times have ad hoc bodies, again, like I mentioned, the work group on homelessness. You can provide, you can get more information on all of the city's advisory boards in Lacey Municipal Code, Chapter Two, as well as the City Council Policies and Procedures, Section two fourteen. And finally, the Board and Commission Handbook, which is specific to advisory board members. Taking a deeper look into our current advisory boards, what I've provided in the staff report is a little bit of data. And this is really a snapshot of what we anticipate each advisory board to meet. So what you're seeing here on Table A is all of our advisory boards. They can meet anywhere between one time a year to over twenty-four times a year, depending on what's in their purview and what they're making recommendations on. So just as an example, how to how to read this, you can see Parks Culture and Recreation has seven members. They generally meet once a month, so you could anticipate that they would meet twelve times. And looking at twenty twenty-two, and we did include joint meetings for this specific table, they met thirteen times. So they could meet jointly either with this body, or they might meet jointly with another advisory board, like they did the Commission on Equity. So as you can see, it really varies how many meetings there actually were each year, depending on the advisory board.
I left one. Shows one, the two, so that I understand why the two council members wouldn't be on there, but so the two retired law enforcement officers that are on there, they're not included in that either?
On this table currently, no, and it's a good distinction because it does say retired or current. And so under this, we just had the general public member.
Gotcha, okay.
So moving on to Table B, it provides very similar data, but actually takes a snapshot of twenty twenty-two and talks about how many meetings and how many hours were expended and what the average duration per each of those meetings were. So going back to our example of Parks Culture and Recreation, with the eleven meetings, not including the joint one, these are just distinctive of their own meetings. Total about fifteen hours were expended on just that advisory board, so each meeting was about one and a half hours in duration. So just to give kind of a visual representation of the data that was just shown, what I'm showing here in Figure A is the total number of meetings. This is again, not including joint meetings, so you can see Planning Commission had the most meetings in twenty twenty-two, followed by the Commission on Equity. And then the Board of Parks Commissioners, which is now our Parks Culture and Recreation Board. In Figure two, it shows the total hours expended per advisory board. And you can see here that the Commission on Equity expended thirty-two and a half hours on all of their meetings. And then next was the Planning Commission at twenty-one, followed up by the Board of Parks Commissioners at about fifteen. So then when you take a look at the number of meetings, the total duration of meetings, you can get an example of what the average meeting looks like. And you can see the Commission on Equity meetings averaged two point three hours. And then you had Planning Commission and LTAC at one point two, and the Board of Park Commissioners at one point four. So when we're, I mentioned a few barriers, possible barriers to advisory board participation. We mentioned time availability constraints, transportation, internet, childcare. And then I know, like I, there could be other examples out there, but I just wanted to kind of provide kind of a contextual example of what this could look like. So we've got community member number one, community member number one is retired, they have no children at home, and they are a vehicle owner. So in this case, and I know I'm making some generalizations and assumptions here, and I do want to make sure that everyone is aware of that. They likely have significant discretionary time, they don't require childcare, and they can easily access meetings within a driving range of ten minutes. So if your meeting time lasts an average of an hour and a half or ninety minutes, their travel time, getting there, coming back is about twenty minutes. And so in total, what they've expended, just in this example, is about three dollars in gas for a total meeting time of a hundred and ten minutes and a total cost of three dollars, because the only thing expended was was the gas. Community member two is in the workforce from nine to five, they have children under the age of five, they are a single parent, and they are a vehicle owner. Comparative to our community, community member number one, they likely have a limited discretionary time, they require some degree of childcare. And they can, with that being a vehicle owner, can drive to meetings within ten minutes. So giving the same meeting of time of ninety minutes, they have the same travel time of twenty minutes and the same expenditure of gas of about three dollars. However, they would likely require childcare, and so in this example, they're getting about two hours of childcare for fifty dollars. So again, the total time is the same as community member one, but the total cost of participation is significantly higher. At fifty-three dollars. And then finally, for the last example, community member number three. So in this particular example, they're in the workforce, their time does vary. They've got children under the age of ten, they are a transit user, and they have no high-speed internet. Once again, comparative to community member number one, they probably have much limited discretionary time. They would require taking a bus ride, the bus ride would likely take longer than driving a car, so in this example, I've used thirty minutes. And they have limited access by internet, they'd also require childcare. So for the same meeting of ninety minutes, their travel time would be significantly higher if they were to go in person, so that would be a sixty-minute travel time. They would also need childcare if they're going in person, if they were not going in person, they would likely need to upgrade their internet access. So just kind of budgeting in there a sixty-dollar amount, again, because you are now exceeding two hours for childcare. Your total time would be a hundred and fifty minutes to attend and participate in the same meeting. And your total cost for participation would be higher than the rest of community member one and community member two, for a total of sixty dollars in this particular example. So the stipend programs try to reduce barriers to participation by offsetting potential direct costs incurred by participating. And then a kind of second benefit is they also could potentially reduce burnout of existing members. And so the cases that I've seen are, there's commonly, you know, a community member who continues to serve and continues to serve because there isn't a kind of a pool of replacements. And so the idea being that, again, if you can reduce barriers, have more people interested in participating, then in likelihood, this person would not have to kind of continue to go through the meetings and have that burnout effect.
That was my question, as we sit here and try to foster participation, are we also, is this also going to help with retention? Then I saw in here that there is a low income, kind of a double amount. What is defined, what what, who defines low income, and what is, do we know what that number is? Is that like the global AMI, or is that something different?
That's a great question, Deputy Mayor, and we will get to that in just a second. So if you want to hold that thought for for a couple of minutes, we'll get right there. Actually, it's the next slide, so you don't have to hold that thought too long. So what we did at staff, we took a review of existing stipend programs that were out there and tried to get a good understanding. See, hey, you know, how are different jurisdictions doing this? And what we found is that stipend programs vary by government entity and the amount varies by different government entities. So as an example, some entities provide all members the same stipend. Some members provide stipends only to members experiencing financial hardships, and this can look different between jurisdictions. And then some provide tiers of stipends based on financial circumstances. So I've got three examples here, but these are certainly not the only examples of advisory board stipend programs. But the city of Bend, Oregon provides a stipend of forty dollars for every advisory board member with attendance requirements up to five hundred dollars a year. The city of Durham, North Carolina, provides stipends for advisory board members at a flat rate of fifty-dollar meeting with attendance requirements, and there is no cap. And the city of Olympia provides a stipend of twenty-five dollars per meeting attended with the option to waive. And participants who self-certify as low income receive a fifty dollars per meeting attended. So under Olympia's program, it is at the discretion of the person who is filling out the materials as whether or not they certify as low income. There are other programs that might have you provide more information to see if you hit certain AMI thresholds.
Would would that add to their income for the following year and make them not possibly low income?
Yeah, and we'll, we'll talk about kind of what that looks like from a fiscal, financial side.
Is the recommendation to pay this stipend, whether it's in person or? Because most meetings are now done, you know, hybrid. Are we, is the recommendation to pay it whether they come, whether they zoom in or they're in person?
That is correct, and we'll go over the details of the recommendation. I just want to first get kind of a base of what's out there. So the other thing we looked at was liability and the Volunteer Protection Act, which is a federal law adopted in nineteen ninety-seven. There is also a very similar state law in the RCWs. And basically, what both of the federal and state law state is that volunteers are protected from personal liability if, among other requirements, volunteers do not receive anything of value in lieu of compensation in excess of five hundred dollars on an annual basis. So you do see, you know, going back to the city of Bend, they do have that cap of five hundred dollars for this specific reason. So some places have the cap and others do not. We took a look at application, so what advisory board were getting stipends and which were not eligible? And this also varies, some jurisdictions provide stipends to all advisory boards, while others did not include certain advisory boards. In particular, temporary or ad hoc advisory boards were not included. Tax requirements, and I think this gets to your question, council members, that advisory board stipend programs must comply with all federal tax requirements. And how many jurisdictions approach this is by considering advisory board members as vendors, and so they would be getting a W nine form.
Can we just back up for one thing? I'm interested to know, the Volunteer, the Volunteer Protection Act protects volunteers from personal liability.
So long as they don't receive more than five hundred dollars, um, like what personal liability are we talking about? Like, have we, we, I mean, obviously something happened, it transpired for.
Somewhere there was a lawsuit, for sure.
Cause it was volunteering and, yeah, we're trying to be held, what, and so in this case, they still be protected by.
So that, that advisory.
They wouldn't if it goes over.
Specific member was being held liable for some.
Well, I can't say it was specific to an advisory board, it's just generally to volunteers, so it could have looked like a number of circumstances. But certainly, um, because advisory boards are volunteers, this would be a protection under the VPA.
More than ten meetings, though, they're gonna go over that five hundred.
Well, and so, so let me uh, let me get to some of the details of the program for those uh, very specific uh, thoughts and questions.
Maybe Dave knows of, of something specific.
Well, let's get through this and let's, let's hold the question, okay.
So, um, so let's talk the details, cause I think that's what everybody's really interested in. So this is provided in attachment one is a draft advisory board stipend program. And I think uh, first and foremost, just to make it clear that this would be an opt-in program. So you, as the advisory board participant, would have to say, yes, I would like to participate in this stipend program. And this would be done on an annual basis. So every year, the beginning of the year, January from February. If you are a returning advisory board member, you would have to fill out and say, yes, I'd like to continue to be part of this program. And if you don't, then you will not continue to be part of this program. I recognize that advisory board members, I know we made appointments here recently, jump in midstream in a year. Or uh, their term cycle can be very different. So we would also provide sixty days from when a new member starts to jump in. And opt into the advisory board stipend program. Our recommendation is to provide a stipend of fifty dollars per meeting attended for most advisory board members. Um, and twenty-five dollar stipends for uh, Lacey Youth Council members. Uh, stipends would be distributed to advisory board members at a minimum of twice a year, although it could be at a frequency much higher.
Yeah, I was gonna say, if, if, you know, the goal is to get people that need, you know, that may need this help, twice a year is probably not sufficient.
And then that again is just kind of a, a baseline, that does not mean that it wouldn't happen on a, you know, bi-monthly basis or monthly basis. But just to establish some clear protocol for what that would look like. Our recommendation would be to cap the program at five hundred dollars. So um, and it would base, be based on attendance requirements. So to get to your question, uh, council member on in-person or remote. It wouldn't make a distinction between how you attended the meeting, recognizing again, there could still be needs, uh, costs associated such as childcare and internet. As well as some other things that might not have been contemplated on this list. So for every meeting attended, um, you would receive a stipend if you opt in of the fifty or twenty-five dollars up to a maximum of five hundred dollars.
Would you be able to? You call it defer compensation, uh, compensation and put it into like, uh, Roth IRA or something if they hadn't had it. Because not everybody that will opt into this will be of low income and, and, but they also don't wanna.
I think this is, is meant for people who.
I, I know, but we've all know that it, there'll be people that aren't.
So council member, what I would say to that is again, we just wanna ensure that all federal tax requirements on our end are, are accomplished.
Um.
I was just asking if it would be available.
On, on that note, it does say stipends would follow all relevant uh, tax requirements is kind of the second page of this. Um, and that this would be applicable, uh, uh, to, again, our permanent advisory boards. However, regional advisory board members, council members and current city employees would not be eligible to receive a stipend. Um, we would also create an annual report to the Lacey City Council on the impacts of the program. And this would be a joint effort between the city manager's office, our finance department, as well as our city clerk's uh, department. And part of this, um, we've got our new tool of, of civic clerk, and we're hoping uh, to leverage that if we were to move forward with a program like this for reporting and accountability.
Only I would add, so that says current city employees. So for instance, again, on left one, you have two retirees, they're not current employees.
Correct, and it's uh, distinctly for current employees.
But they're not, but on that chart, they weren't included, that's why I'm.
Uh, they weren't included in kind of the general overview on that chart, but yes, they would be able to.
They would be eligible.
Yes, and we'll, we'll actually take a look at that, maybe in the next uh, slide.
I have one thing, um, the youth at half, what?
Well, you know, I think again, when you're looking at the potential costs incurred, um, you know, childcare, internet service, that there are a, a reduction in potential. Um, costs that they may be encouraged for participating in those meetings.
Can we make it thirty-five?
This is at the discretion of the council.
Well, let's, let's get through it.
Okay, well, a couple of other things just to recognize as part of uh, taking a look at uh, this type of program. Like I mentioned earlier in the presentation is that we would likely need to go back and clean up the Lacey Municipal Code. Uh, there are several sections that talk about advisory boards and advisory boards um, serving without compensation. And so we'll certainly wanna work with the city attorney's office and take a look at what would need to be revised in order to move forward with a program like this. So I provided a couple of examples of our planning commission, uh, which states, and they shall not, they shall serve without compensation. Um, and then you can see our Parks Culture and Recreation Board also has something very similar about not receiving a salary or other compensation for services. Uh, we also think that this would be a, a good opportunity to potentially uh, take a look at the demographics of our advisory boards. To identify gaps, if there are gaps in representation and what they are, and to establish a baseline for future reporting. As part of the program, we would wanna come back in front of council and just talk a little bit about what and how the program is impacting our advisory boards. So we'd like to capture demographic data information on the participation currently of advisory boards as well as. Um, information on advisory board applicants. I do wanna make the distinction, though, that this would not be something that would be taken into account as part of the review process. This information would be available uh, to people outside of the review process. So it'd be more of just taking a aggregated look at what kind of demographic information we have on our advisory boards.
So. I know Troy's not here, but are we gonna ten ninety-nine these people? Is that, is that what we're?
We, we will work with the finance department to make sure that all federal requirements are, are. And, and that's how many, many jurisdictions do it, but we're, we certainly wanna keep working on that, the details.
That's what I was thinking too.
Okay, well, like, like I mentioned uh, earlier on in the presentation, um, we did take this around to a number of advisory boards. And this was actually something that the Commission on Equity recommended. They said, hey, this is a really interesting program, we are one advisory board, we'd love to hear what other advisory board uh, think about a, a program like this. And so I've provided some of the feedback in the staff report, um, but I just wanna go over some, some highlights of what we heard. So some advisory board feedback, um, there were mentioned that they served on advisory boards because they wanted to help the community, not because of a stipend. Um, but there were also uh, people who recognized that the program could help lower barriers to participation in government and policy. And increase underrepresented and unheard voices. There were concerns over the demographic data, and we explained again what I just mentioned about keeping that information separate from any decision-making policies. There were questions about what happens if there is no forum at a public meeting. Uh, there were questions of the effectiveness of a potential tiered system as well as low-income qualifications. There were concerns that twenty-five dollars per meeting could be too low for incurred costs. Uh, there was concerns that there was limited quantitative data on existing gaps in representation. And there were curiosity about what other efforts were going on to increase uh, participation and remove barriers. Uh, there were also questions about how the city would track data metrics and benchmarks, and what would that look like? How the city would fund a program like this, and then what would happen to Lacey Youth Council members? And how would it impact their volunteer hours potentially? So, um, that is a, an overview of the draft policy, and again, we're here tonight to review it. There are four options for the council to consider. What I do wanna say is, um, under option one, which would be to create an advisory board program, the recommendation would be. Um, we obviously would have to clean up the Lacey Municipal Code as well as get a resolution with the city council policies and procedure manual. Um, and also get the infrastructure in place so that we can uh, have this program work effectively. And so the recommendation would be to consider it as part of the twenty twenty-four budget with the program starting in twenty twenty-four.
Do we know what the impact would be on, on for the case of the students' volunteer hours and then receiving a stipend? Would that be a conflict of interest?
It's certainly something we'll have to work out with the school district, um, and.
So we don't know.
We don't know at this point, yes.
So, in my day job, we have implemented a similar program based on changes to state law. And some of the things that we needed to consider is, how do we make this, if we're gonna do it? How do we make accessing a stipend low barrier? Because we don't want to create more barriers with a program that we're trying to implement to reduce barriers, right? We don't wanna make signing up, getting the forms filled out so onerous that people don't participate because it takes too much time. Or you have to provide income verification documents, and sometimes that's a lot for some people who are already struggling. I like the idea of collecting demographic data in aggregate and keeping it very well-protected and confidential. But just to gauge what the representation on our boards look like, right? Because we have that TRPC demographic data of what our community looks like. Is, are our boards representative of our community? I think that's really worthwhile. And then we can use that perhaps to track if offering stipends results in increased representation of underrepresented groups.
And on that, on that last, last note, um, council member, I do wanna just point out, though, that impacts of a program like this could take several years to actually see. Because again, term lengths, not people returning for additional terms. So, you know, seeing uh, big changes in one year is not a good way to evaluate this program.
The, the reason why I brought up the, you know, reinvestment or if they had a Roth IRA and they had five hundred dollars a year. Say sixteen-year-old on the youth council invested five hundred dollars every year until the retirement age, even just twenty years. If they did for, if they did five hundred a, a month, it would be four hundred and thirty thousand dollars. If you divide that by twelve. One, one payment basically for the year, that'd be forty thousand, thirty-six thousand dollars. And you know, when they got to age sixty-two and a half, that's only twenty years, and they're sixteen, so they'd be thirty-six. They could essentially double that again, that could be eighty, you know, seventy thousand dollars that they would have as a retirement. And that's the reason why I brought that up. And the adults, yeah, they, they, some could really use it, don't get me wrong. But I'm more focused and I might be speaking up for you, I'll speak for myself, but I think the deputy mayor's on the same. You know, thought process to me, these, these kids on the youth council are contributing a, 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 a knowledge base that we don't ever think of. Cause we're not teenagers, right? Uh, this could really be something that, you know, when they turn sixty-two and a half, they would have something, no name. To show for their volunteer.
I think one of the other things that we did when we implemented this at work was, we made really sure to notify recipients. That people who are going to request the stipend, that it could impact eligibility for other benefits. So if we have someone who is really low income accessing this, it's still treated as income, and it could actually jeopardize eligibility. If they're only a slim margin underneath of the line for TANF or subsidized childcare, they would have to claim this as income, and it could jeopardize benefits access. And all we can do really, cause we can't. Fix that, but we can tell people, just be aware, if you're really close to the line, you may wanna be cautious in accessing this stipend.
And, and maybe reinvesting that would save them on taxable income.
So I, this is a, an issue that I've been um, contemplating for a long time, and it's really an issue I have evolved. Over, over time, um, but when the, uh, when I started working on some, uh, with the National League Cities. On the uh, the Commission on uh, with their equity work. Um, one of the things I brought from get-go is, was uh, how do I get better representations on our, our, our boards and commissions? And, um, you know, even going back, you know, several, several years. Uh, we saw cities starting to do this, cause there's real barriers for people to participate. In um, our democracy, right? I mean, the, the childcare is a, is, is a big deal, it's really expensive. Transportation, um, there's a, and, and as, um, I've gone through and I've. Been, been making appointments to our boards and commissions for a long time. I've had conversations with people and they said, you know, how many times see me? It's like, well, I'm not sure if I could, that, I'm not sure if I could afford that. You know, and that just like, wow. You know, and sometimes we don't think about that, you know, we're obviously doing a lot of volunteer time too. Um, but there are some people out there who just cannot afford to participate in our local government. And that is, um, needs to be corrected, that, that is not. Uh, is, we, there should not be a barrier to participate in your local government. And so, um, I've heard that it does take a while for this uh, program to have impact. Because a lot of people out there who are definitely are on the margins just think that, I can't do that. I can't, I just can't do it, it's uh, too, I, I don't have the time, you know? Even trying to arrange a babysitter and can I get a babysitter, you know, uh, is, is difficult. Um, and so, um, it takes a little bit of while to say, hey, you know, we do have a program that can help you. No one's fifty dollars meeting, no one's making any money here, we're just trying to cover basic expenses. Um, and it still probably doesn't, I mean, I appreciate the, uh, you know, there, there's, there's some real costs out there. Um, to, to go into meetings and doing this stuff, so I, I really, um, I'm all in favor of option one. Um, I, 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 I'm sort of leaning with the, the deputy mayor here on the twenty-five dollars for the, the students. I, I think, uh, there are some students um, out there who, um, they're struggling, right? From, just like everyone else is, um, and uh, there's this balance between the volunteer hours or, you know. Working a job, or do I become a, uh, you know, do I, do I participate in the youth council? You know, can I afford to participate in youth council? There's kids out there, especially in this, in our school district, that, that's a real, that's a big deal, that's a big deal.
We should, and I agree, I, I'm intending to agree with this. Uh, but you know, my other concern is with the volunteer hours. Is that going to be a conflict, do they see that as?
I think this program is an opt-in program. Um, it's an opt-in program and all we can do is provide the information.
Right.
So then if, if it interferes with their hours, they could not, they could not not opt in and get the hours. And we don't know even that it will affect the hours, right? This, it may not affect the volunteer hours.
And I will say, um, not every youth council member, uh, does youth council for volunteer hours specifically. A lot of them come in with a lot of volunteer hours and they are doing it again to be an advisory board to the city council.
Cause they're, they're required, I don't know what the numbers are, my kid's been out of school a long time, but I know there's some, there's some requirement for volunteer hours, right?
Yeah, I would say if we do this or we do nothing, um, whether you're on the youth council or the planning commission or something else, that they all get. The same, same opportunity.
I, I would, we're just increasing the, the student to the same as the other's person.
Me too.
Across the board.
Yeah, and I also agree that, um, we should pay the stipend as soon as feasible. Once a request has been made, so, you know, when we get the request, process it like new payroll if it's possible. Or as quick as we process regular reimbursement requests from city staff.
Cause then they wouldn't be requesting any time, I mean, they, once they signed up, they would get it for every meeting, right? So could it be done, yeah, I mean, could it be done monthly?
It would be, it would be a continued space, but we can look at finance and figure out what that payroll and that accounting piece would be.
At least more frequently than once or twice a year.
Yeah, that just doesn't seem like.
Yeah, no, that won't, wouldn't work, I think we're defeating whoever, yeah.
And part of, part of it is, um, like I said, we wanna work with our finance department to see kind of what this would look like, how this would look like. But we'd also need to work with our city clerk's office to get the information and the data on, you know, who was there to the finance, what does that look like? And so, you know, we put twice a year as just the floor, but again, we would evaluate what is a good process to do this. And what could that look like at a, at greater frequency?
All comfortable, I'll leave that to you to, you guys to figure out.
In, in this, in the scheme of things, for budgetary purposes, this is like very, very close for our budget. But if, it does what we're trying to do and increase participation, um, it's, it's been really hard. To, I've held positions open longer, 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 because uh, it, 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 it's just really, it's really hard. It's really hard to get people to volunteer, um, and so I, I, I think, you know. This is something that we, we should definitely um, need to implement and, um, I'm glad that we're finally here.
It'll be interesting to look at it two, three years in to see if it's had an impact.
Yeah.
You know, whether we are getting more people volunteering for the board and if it's changing the demographics at all, that kind of thing.
Okay, I think you have some direction.
You have some great direction, thank you, I appreciate the conversation.
Okay, well, um, with that, we have reached the end of our agenda, um, so.
That's something I wanted to say. I wanted this council to consider a motion to censure. I wanted this council to consider a motion to censure council members, Uncle and Greenstein. Because of their recent violation of RCW twenty-nine A, eight-four oh four oh. Uh which deals with removing or um defacing campaign advertising, including political signs.
Can I suggest maybe go into an executive session? I don't know, not executive session, but um. I, we did receive quite a, a public comment on this issue. Um, it's a part of the record. Um, I, I, at this time, just, do you guys like to make a statement?
I have no comments.
I have no comments.
I mean, it's, I, I, I guess I do have some comment. In the time I've been on this council, you know, for twelve years, um I don't believe we've ever censured anyone for things that were far greater. Um, in my opinion, but you know, that's a council decision. If that's what you guys are comfortable doing. Uh, there's always, as usual, more to the story, basing this strictly on what our newspaper reported. Is, and then what people said publicly about it seems a bit. Out of sorts, doesn't seem like that's how uh demo- democracy is done, but council's free to do what they wish.
Um, I, I'm very hesitant, um. And I would not support a, a motion uh at this point. Um, I think, you know, this is something that we've heard. This is. We're, we're creeping into um. An area where council has never been involved in before when it comes to elections. Um, and I do not feel comfortable with this council uh rem- making a um, a comment. One way or the other, where it has to do with elections. I know there's this uh. There's a cost involved with this, um but uh I am not comfortable at all. Um supporting a, a motion for um for censure. That's something this council's never done before. Um and we have had other, you know, uh, I would say um controversial. Items come before on, on council members in the past and um. And, you know, at the end of the day, it's up to the, I believe it's up to the public to decide. The public is our boss. Right? And I, I believe it's up to, at the end of the day, it's up for the public to decide who should be the representatives. Um and, and not um have not come from the council to, to um. Influence one way or the other on that. And I'd say, well, this isn't about that. Well, this, this, at the end of the day, this is still about a campaign. And uh that's why I, I don't think it's appropriate for this council to entertain a motion.
So. I agree, campaign stuff is separate from what we do here in the city council and it has to be. I think this is relevant to discuss here because it damages public trust. In the city of Lacey. It, it painted Lacey in a bad way. It. Yeah, it damages public trust in elected officials. And, you know, we're held to a higher standard. It didn't feel like conduct becoming of community leaders. It was all over the news and it, it does not feel appropriate to say nothing about it. Because people saw Lacey like that.
Well, um. Again, I think I, I agree that this um is uh. Has not painted, you know, a couple of our council members in, in the best light and the, you know, the story behind it or the circumstances behind it. Um, I, you know, we can. I just don't feel like it's, it's appropriate for, for us to be talking about a campaign issue. And at the end of the day, this is a campaign issue. Um, and it's up to the people to decide. Not this council to try to direct um one way or the other.
I think we're gonna have a discussion. I'd like to go ahead and second problems motion because. We're kind of dancing around it, but not talking.
I will say, you know, um. Being inter- involved in it indirectly, you know, um that. You know, maybe I could have something to gain out of this if they were to be censored because it's my opponent's sign that was involved. You know what I mean? So it's, I, I believe it's, you know. There's, there's so many different angles this, this can go, you know, and, you know. But I'll, I'll leave it at that. Mayor, do you have any thing going on?
Not at this time. I. I, I, I saw the footage. I read the article. I don't. I, I know the public will decide. Uh, and, and I'm, I'm willing to leave it to them. Uh, to, to decide who's gonna represent them in this, in this next four years. Um. I don't, I don't want to. Damage or cripple our council. Uh, by cutting voices off. Uh, I oftentimes think that. You know. People beat themselves up more than we can beat them up. And. Uh, I know that that's happened. And um, you know, a vote will determine.
Is there any other discussion?
Yeah, I would say I would probably abstain, probably because, you know, I have something to gain, but then at the same time, it's uh.
You have something?
I do. I mean, and in fairness to Ted and Mike, I think it's superseding politics. This is about. Having done something wrong, having done something that was Lacey and was council and a bad mind. And I believe all that they've mentioned calls for is returning the sign that was taken to the candidate. And apologizing to the candidate and to the owner of the coffee stand. I don't find that to be too onerous. There's, there's nothing that calls for.
I can agree with that.
Anybody from a committee or any other, you know, anything. That's all the motion says, and I think that's fair.
Well, in all fairness, you know, there's a young lady that decided to run against the long time and cut, incumbent too, whose sign is taken down and.
Talking about campaigns from the dais at all. I think it's a, uh. I think there's any influence there is um on, on. It's not for this council, it's for the people to decide.
And that's why I have refrained from any speech.
It looks as if. There's been a motion in a second. Or there's a rush. I just want to make sure that. Can you restate the motion?
Yeah. So, I move that this council. Censure council members Kunkel and Greenstein for their recent and very public violation of RCW twenty-nine A. Eighty-four, zero, four, zero. Uh, which has to do with removing or defacing campaign signs, including lawfully placed campaign signs. Um. And that they issue a public apology and arrange proactively for the return of the sign.
Can you give us a strong definition for censorship in this context, please?
So uh censure is a formal statement. Um, I think people will mention I.
It doesn't create a gag order or anything like that.
Don't be specific on the term in city council's policies.
I want to say one last thing. So I, I'm in a no-win situation here. So it's either, you know, a, a stand-up or someone who, who's decided to. In a campaign and get a little contentious or whatever, but at the same time, I have something to benefit from it, so I'm gonna abstain. Yeah, it's a, I'm gonna have to, it's a clear conflict.
If the motion's gonna be voted upon, are the two, are these guys allowed to vote or should they?
Of course they're allowed to vote. And I don't know if this has any binding. Has no, has no binding power either. Which is again.
Ceremonial.
Ceremony, which I don't like to do. I mean, I mean, I'm, again, uh it's, for me, it's up for the people to decide who represents them.
I will say this though, because, you know, in, in past elections, I, I had my child in, involved in it and I said something to this. But I'm just saying that I have personally apologized. Maybe that's more to here. Uh but. But the motion that's on.
I'm not sure how anyone on this council knows whether an apology was given or not. For starters, and that's not part of the censure. The censure is merely the council saying that you did something wrong. And nothing to do with, there's no consequences, there's no telling, you know. I do have a question for you though, Dave. I get you said that we would, as council members, we can vote, but how do we not have a conflict of interest? How do I not have to abstain on that? I mean, I'm clearly. And I mean, it's clearly affects me, so isn't that the definition of a conflict of interest?
So. The city as a whole, I don't know if there's any division of council members.
Understand.
And my thought on it in regards to my representation of the city as a whole is that um. By taking part in this vote, council members are not receiving a direct benefit one way or the other. It's a vote on whether. A formal statement of disapproval is appropriate. It's unique.
It's very unique. Is there any other discussion?
I haven't, my interest is in telling my community that. I as a council member and anybody else who may agree with me on this council, that what. What has happened is an unfortunate situation that reflects badly on the city and I do believe that. The owner of the coffee stand and the candidate deserve apologies and that the sign be apparent.
And I, I, as your, as a council member, that is a hundred percent. Your right to interact with uh the, the public, to interact with voters, whatever you want to do, see fit. The problem I have is we're making, uh, this is now at the council level, we're voting on it. On a campaign issue. From the dice, that is unprecedented. Um. If we all individually have our rights, we're all accountable to our voters and at the end of the day, that's, that's who our bosses. Voters are our boss. They're the ones that decide. Uh, and so. This doesn't. Re- accomplish anything in, in my opinion, if you want to do something personally or as a council member, that's, you have the right to do that. And then let the, let the, let the public decide if your response is appropriate or not. As, but in this circumstance, this is. Completely unprecedented and uh I do not feel comfortable with it at all. So I'll be voting no.
I think accountability is important and even though we keep campaign issues and city business separately. When there is a nexus to public trust, the reputation of our city in the eyes of the public. It would be inappropriate, in my opinion, for us to say nothing, because to be silent on an issue like this that is so visible. It's like tacitly suggesting that we're okay with it, that it's fine.
I don't think any of us been. We've all have received phone calls, public's reached out, you have that interaction. If you want to make a statement on um, you know, your, your individual um. City um Facebook page, wherever, that's your prerogative, but, but I just, yeah. So, any other discussion? There's been a motion in a second. I'll air that motion to signify by saying I, raise your hand.
Aye.
All those opposed? Saying? Well, it's gonna. Did you vote?
Even if I did, it's gonna be a deadlock.
It's gonna be a deadlock, so the motion doesn't pass. You know, you need to vote.
Oh, sorry, uh, no.
So the motion fails. We've now reached the end of agenda, so without objection, I'll call this meeting adjourned.